At the eye. Welcome to this regular city council meeting on June 24th, 2024. The time is 5:30. This is a call to order. Roll call of our council.
Counselor Long.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
And Counselor Richardson and Mayor Mayes are both absent today.
And now we'll have Counselor Runyon pledge of allegiance, please.
Understand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we need to have a motion to approve our agenda. We do have one additional item. 10C on the agenda tonight. It's under action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of action item 10C.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Did you get that counsel? Okay. And do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any oppose? All right. Audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Is that three or five? Three, got it? Three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to an appropriate staff member, who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. All right. Do we have anyone that would like to speak tonight? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, is anyone signed up? On Zoom? All right, good. We'll move ahead on item number six, city managers' report.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of items for you this evening. I wanted to let everybody know, and in particular, the council and community, that we have a strategic investment program survey out, which closes July 5th. I believe we've had several hundred responses so far, so that survey is doing really well. And we'll be following that up with a survey around transient room tax. We'll likely post that on June 28th. There'll be a little overlap with the SIP survey. But with the upcoming discussions that we'll be having, we wanted to get that survey out just as soon as we could and solicit some input from the community. The Dog River Pipeline Project is expected to be completed towards the end of July. And just as a reminder, we have a celebration event penciled in for September 13th. So please make sure that's on your calendars. Also, the Oregon City County Managers Association Conference is this week in Hood River. So I'll be spending the next few days there attending the sessions. The last day has kind of a mix of sessions about city government and city management, which several different staffers will be attending. We'll also be doing a tour of downtown the Dows for downtown revitalization, urban renewal, and the wall dogs murals that we have. Apparently, we have about 45 people signed up for that tour, which is a pretty good showing. And so we'll be wandering around downtown Wednesday afternoon. Wanted to note, if you haven't heard, but our sister city delegation is in Japan. And they're having a great time. And I'd like to take this moment to ask our chief of police to come up and give us a couple of comments from the events that transpired last night and the hard work of our officers.
Thank you, sir, Council President McLaughlin, members of the council. As you know, I'm Tom, we're the chief of police here in the city.
A little closer, please.
The city of the Dallas is better. Sorry about that.
That's good.
Over the last several days, we've had a couple of incidents of great note and concern within the police department. On Tuesday, June 18th, in the early morning hours, our officers assisted deputies with the Wasco County Sheriff's Department in the recovery of a stolen vehicle, which turned into what we would call a violent vehicle encounter. One of our patrol's cars was crashed and lost. And one of our officers fired his service weapon on the suspect, as did two sheriff's deputies. Those officers and deputies, pardon me, are now on administrative leave during the course of the investigation. There's a grand jury set for the 12th of July, where the DA will present the case to the grand jury. No officers were injured in the case, but we again did lose a patrol car. We'll need to address that in the near future. And then on Saturday, just a couple of short days later, again, in the early morning hours, homicide occurred in the city of the Dows shooting at West, the West End, West Center Market. Our officers responded on scene. They called out detective support and investigated throughout the night and throughout the next day, developed leads using a variety of investigative resources, and we're able to make an arrest in that case. So that's also scheduled for grand jury coming up shortly, but there's no other threat to the public. And so I'd just like to acknowledge the great work of the police department, the officers and deputies and our partners as well. We're hard for long, long hours to bring those cases to resolution. And you should be proud of them, and so should the people of the Dells. Questions I can answer if I can.
Excellent.
Thank you, chief. And I can, if I be so bold as to speak, we're really appreciative of the hard work of our officers and everything they do to keep this community safe and the risks that they take in doing so. And with that, Council President, that's my report. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Excellent. All right. Rod Runyon, Counselor Runyon, please.
On June 18th, a Tuesday, I appeared with the mayor, Mayor Mayes, on the KODL coffee break, just briefly. On the 19th, I represented the city at the Oregon Veterans Home for the reception of the Alaska Airlines Fallen Soldiers Kart. And I want to commend the city of the Dells Police Department for helping with the escort from the freeway up to the veterans home, and then coming back at four o'clock when they left and making sure the carts, it's truck and trailer, and about 48, 49 motorcycles that were escorting front and back of that cart, which is on its way to Nashville, to the airport in Nashville. And aboard that cart, the officers may not have known, but there was a Navy veteran, Roy Campbell, in his cremated remains on that cart. So it was actually an official escort, as well as a visitation on the route to Nashville. So thanks again. Appreciate that. On the 20th, I met with city manager Matthew Klebes. And on the 21st, I met with the county administrative officer Tyler Stone on some issues regarding future Google funds, endowments, and things like that, doing some due diligence. That's it.
Good. Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, good. And Counselor Long.
Okay. So I just want to comment that when I had the pleasure of representing the city on the committee outreach team, we fly Alaska Air and a number of times been there when the honor flights come in. And that is a very moving experience to see the veterans get off and have people stand and clap for them. It's very powerful.
I was in Reagan International Airport when passengers were arriving, and then they were World War II, 90 years old and coming in. And the entire airport stood and clapped. Yeah.
The other thing I want to say is that I'm very thankful that all of our law enforcement officers from both agencies were able to go home after those incidents. We're very fortunate. On Tuesday, June 18th, we had an urban renewal agency board meeting. We covered quite a wide variety of topics. And I would encourage people to maybe go back and either watch the video, if you're interested in our finances for urban renewal, as well as the projects. We're getting ready to update our plan. And so there's quite a bit of information in that meeting. I don't know if the draft minutes are up yet, but they'll also be up soon prior to our next meeting. They'll be in the meeting packet for next month. And then I also usually have a sister cities meeting, but of course, that did not happen this week because they're in Japan. And that is my report.
Excellent. I did attend an urban meeting as well, and that was very interesting. Airport meeting last Friday. And I'm in contact with the neighbors in the scenic area on the Airbnb in it. It seems that everything is calmed. The force is still keeping a calm area in that particular spot. So that's good news. And we will work to continue having neighbors in that neighborhood working together. All right. So that's my report for this week. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any counselors may request an item to be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. At this time, I'd like to call on our city clerk. You have some additional information?
I do. The minutes from June 10th, 2024, will have an additional attachment. And that is the slides that were printed and handed out that had the tourism definitions from city manager.
All right. We need to get, let's reflect on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the June 10th, 2024 regular city council meeting minutes and resolution number 24-015, authorizing staff to submit transportation growth management grant applications to Oregon Department of Transportation. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
A second, aye.
And we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the passage of this item, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got it. Contract review board actions. This is item number nine. We are looking for an authorization of the annual amendment to wastewater treatment plant operations contract. And we have our public works director, Mr. Anderson.
Think it's on now.
I think so.
Thank you. Council President, members of council. You may recall that last year, we authorized a new 15-year operating contract with OMI for the operation of the city's wastewater treatment plant. And just like the contracts in prior years, that contract gets updated or amended annually to update the operating cost for the current, or for the coming year. And this is that time to adopt that annual amendment. The contract includes two categories of costs. There's direct costs and there's a management fee. The contract also provides a default formula for calculating the cost adjustments each year as a default if negotiations for an alternative value aren't successful. The CPI, it's the, the formula is based on the CPI or Consumer Price Index. The one that is applicable to this contract amendment was 3.1% from January to January of last year. The contract provides a default formula of 3.1%, or excuse me, of the CPI plus 2%, but can be capped at 4% per year. And that's the conditions or the default values when inflation is less than 7%. There's a different formula that applies in periods of higher inflation. However, in this particular contract here, certain cost elements have increased significantly, which were beyond OMI's control, and certainly well above the 3.1% of the rest of CPI. Some of those main contract elements that saw major increases were the increase in treatment chemical costs. Those increased by 25%. Increase in laboratory fees went up by 19 and a half percent, electricity by 12% and natural gas by 11%. Staff believes that accommodating these proposed increases are reasonable because the city experienced similar increases a year ago and budgeted for those in our own operation of the Wicks Water Treatment Plant. Due to these higher than anticipated costs, the proposed contract renewal reflects an increase in the direct cost of 5.1% instead of being capped at the 4%. The contract amendment proposes an increase in the management fee of 4%. And the calculated total increase of the contract would be 5% instead of the default 4. As proposed, and this would be with the 5% total increase, the management fee to be paid in the next year would be $194,709 to OMI. The direct costs for labor, benefits, materials, and services would be $1,232,545 for a total contract cost of $1,427,254. As I mentioned, a total increase of 5%. Beyond that, we have the continued philosophy where the city and OMI equally split the costs of other certain increases like electrical, the treatment, chemical, and natural gas costs, if they come in above the 10% that's budgeted, or they come in more than 10% above what's budgeted. If it comes in above the, or up to 10%, gosh, I'll get this right yet. If it comes in over the 10%, the city picks up those costs. And this is the same way it was in the previous 15-year contract. The one other thing that this amendment proposes to do is it clarifies OMI's responsibilities around cybersecurity and understanding of the limitations of the computer systems that the city's provided down there. Those systems are planned to be upgraded in the next couple of years, but right now, there's some real limitations on how secure those systems could be. They, OMI provides a firewall that commit to continue to operate and maintain that firewall, but they can't do much more than that with the current systems that we've provided them. As in previous years, OMI is responsible for paying any fines or civil penalties for violations of the plant's permit. They provide all the prevent, preventive maintenance on the plant. OMI and the city jointly maintain the city's industrial pre-treatment program. And they also provide quarterly inspections of all facilities in the city that are required to have grease traps, such as commercial kitchens. And currently, we have about 50 of those, and they're looking at each of those quarterly. I do need to reiterate that in terms of the contract, provide an option for the city to limit the annual increase of the cost to 4% instead of the proposed 5%. The limit, if that limitation were imposed, it would reduce the total contract cost by $13,539. Staff does not recommend imposing this limitation to the amendment because the, some of the highest direct cost increases are beyond OMI's control, and they're consistent with cost adjustments that the city made in its own treatment plant budgets. With that, the city's adopted fiscal year 2024-25 budget includes $1,427,254 in the wastewater fund to pay for this contract operation. That is exactly the amount that is being proposed for the contract, so there are adequate funds available for this amendment. And the staff recommendation is that the city council move to authorize the city manager to sign amendment number one to the OMI agreement in an amount not to exceed $1,427,254.
That completes the report by. That completes the report by Director.
Anderson.
Anderson. Mr. Anderson. I give the other nickname you've earned, but I won't. All right. We have a recommendation on the floor. What's your pleasure, council?
Council president, I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to sign amendment number one, the OMI agreement in amount not to exceed $1,427,254.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second and is there any more discussion or debate? Hearing none. All in favor of passing this motion, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
And anyone that has opposed or abstains. Hearing none, that motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to the next, which is rewarding contract number 2024-005, the Dallas Municipal Wi-Fi Assessment. And this is going to be by Ms. Moorhead.
Thank you. Good evening, council president and council. As mentioned, this is about the Dallas Municipal Wi-Fi Assessment. In 2011, the city entered into an original contract with Gorge Networks to deploy the initial and existing Wi-Fi infrastructure in the Dallas. They were supported then by Q Life, which put in the initial fiber network infrastructure that the system ran off of. The installation commenced in June 2011 and had phased expansion through the next subsequent years and now covers most of the downtown core in a blanketing type structure, many of the parks throughout the Dallas, along with many properties along West Sixth, West Sixth Street, including the parking lots of Safeway, Fred Meyer, Buy Mart, Home Depot and so forth. So in 2014 and 2015 or thereabouts, there were further plans to possibly add in more APs or access points, which is what the system basically runs off of. It's the physical hardware throughout the city that you can connect to. There were also plans to update the existing ones that had been put in as early as 2011 as the hardware tends to have a lifespan of about five years or so. However, while some updates appear to have occurred, things fizzled out after that and had, things have not been updated since then. Due to that and the, it being at least seven years since any financial investment was put into the system, the system now lacks security updates for at least five years and is proven unreliable for the people of the Dallas. Due to this unreliability, city staff initiated a request for proposals processed to update the system, recognizing the mounting issues and the urgent need for modernization. Prior to that, staff conducted extensive research into the system as it had been a few years since anyone had really looked into it. Was able to find a large majority of the current access points that are out there and understand the state of the system better, as well as problems within the current system, which then allowed us to create a more informed RFP going forward. One of the major changes we had was that due to the extensive size of the system, upkeeping it has been very difficult. So this RFP retracted that size and focused purely on outdoor recreational areas and cut out the large expansive systems such as the blanketing system, which comes with a large host of problems, not the least of which is just keeping it updated and keeping it working. And so this RFP focused on just outdoor public areas such as parks where we could provide an amenity to the community to help with tourism, economic development, equitable access to internet, along with a couple of other factors. So the city issued the RFP on April 3rd, 2024. It was advertised in the city's webpage and Facebook page, the Daily Journal of Commerce, Oregonbuys.gov and the Columbia Gorge Newspaper. And proposals were open on April 25th, 2024 at 2:00 PM. The city received one proposal from Actual Broadband. It was a fully complete proposal for a proposed total of $248,216.84 to $286,584.99. The reason why there is a difference in price is because the proposal argued two potential possibilities. As the current system runs on fiber, there are some areas that we are looking to service, such as Sarosis Park that are already directly connected to fiber. However, in the chance though that was not the case, it presented two opportunities. One was a basic cost on the assumption that we would first put down the fiber. So it was a cheaper cost, but it did not factor in the, a cost of fiber, putting fiber out there, nor the timeline. And then the other option was the cost of wirelessly connecting to these areas. So in talking further, due to the cost of the program project as long as, as well as these different possibilities, the staff entered into negotiations with Actual Broadband according to the city's local contract review board rules and was sufficiently satisfied that the wireless option would be perfectly fine to accomplish what we wish to accomplish for the slightly elevated price to the contractor, but again, a lower price since we're not factoring in the additional cost of fiber connecting to these sites. So that being said, all that negotiation came to the plan outlined within your packets. So the costing and phasing considerations would be in two parts. The first is disposal of the current system as it is outdated and like I said, has had some problems on scale as well as phase two of the new system installation, which is after that phased into two different phases due to budget. So current system disposal was recommended by the proposal, by the proposer due to problems with trust in the system by the community. If we were to keep it up and people were to switch back and forth between a failing system and a working system, it would be harder to explain exactly, you know, what we've done to make the system better. And there may be some confusion as to what system people are on. There's also questions around continuing to contract with Blue Mountain since they're who our current Wi-Fi system is through as they have taken over from Gorge Networks who originally put it in and are not related to our current proposer. So that complication all leads to it being much easier to take out the current system and start anew. So that cost would be priced at $29,250 and have a timeline of approximately 45 days. And would occur in completion prior to any further installation of a new system. So upon that, a new, new system could be insulated. As mentioned, these would be connected to via fiber where that is a possibility and wireless where that is not. There are some locations that can only be connected to via fiber, including the Dallas Transit Center, Quanis Park, the Dallas, the Discovery Center, parking lot and Riverfront Park. And those have been put on the list as being postponed until fiber can reach there and we can consider them again. Besides those, the rest of them all vary in cost depending on location, which is all listed in your packet. It has been organized into two phases according to the existing budget of $150,000 for phase one. So phase one would therefore include prioritizing city properties and high traffic areas. City properties due to ease of, of access to those properties and high traffic areas due to the expected usage. We're particularly focusing on those with high tourism traffic due to the ability of Wi-Fi to also act as a sense of tourism, such as by redirecting to the Explore the Dallas webpage or other sorts of promotional materials. So phase one would include dismantling the current system and access on second and federal city park, the cruise ship dock, Lewis and Clark Festival Park, Thompson City Park and Sarosis Park, all via wireless except for Sarosis Park, which would be via existing fiber for a total cost of $142,422.60 and for an ongoing monthly management fee of $535 to be paid to Actual Broadband for continued use and upkeep of these access points. Phase two, to be completed upon further funding, would include Firehouse Park, Kramer Park, Quinton Street Ballpark and the Fort Dallas Museum, which rounds out all of the locations listed in the RFP. This system, like it currently is, would, when not using city hardwares and PowerPoints, likely use Northern Wasco County PUD light poles for power. So staff reached out to the PUD in order to ascertain whether or not we can keep using their light poles. The light poles to be used in the system would require a specialized connection to allow for the system to hook into it. But they expressed that that was no issue. They would cost about $30 per antenna to upgrade and there are five antennas in phase one that would need an upgrade. One at city park, one at the cruise ship dock, one at Sarosis Park and two at Thompson City Park for a total of $150 to upgrade. And it would cost about $6.54 per month for the power. Currently, we have an ongoing contract with them for our current Wi-Fi system, which would then be changed to consider the fact that we would be taking out and dismantling the current system and no longer paying those charges and replacing them with the new, much, much more reduced charges. One thing to consider, as I mentioned earlier, is the lifespan and replacement strategy of this system. Access points, as the proposer says, are expected to last five years, explicitly supported by the manufacturer with the potential of being supported for extended software updates for an additional five years. However, the system will continue to work past those five years as we, as we have seen with the current system, but it is once again reliable and it becomes a safety concern when it cannot receive security updates. Therefore, when considering putting in a new system and moving forward on the ongoing cost of the system, you should factor in the cost of replacing it, all the access points at least every 10 years, if not closer to five. So the budget implications of this project, in recognizing the need for phased installation approach, staff budgeted $150,000 for phase one in the fiscal year 2024-25 city budget in the capital project fund line item 037-3700-000.73-30. This line item is used to complete capital improvements to city buildings and projects. Regarding this contract, staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to enter into contract number 2024-005, a contract with Actual Broadband for phase one of the Dallas Municipal Wi-Fi Assessment in an amount not to exceed $150,000. There are two other alternatives proposed in the packet. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Runyon.
I may have missed it. The timeline for the dismantling portion.
The dismantling portion would take approximately 45 days upon start of the process, which would happen after the contract was completed.
And maybe this is a question for Matthew, our city manager. So nothing on phase two would be started at all as we take down pieces. I was wondering, could we be replacing pieces immediately before, before that whole process is done?
I believe Ann may be able to answer that, that question.
Yeah, I imagine it, this, he, so he said he can conduct some of the phases simultaneously as far as the locations within the, the phase. He did suggest the full removal of the current access points before putting any new in. One other concern is that while I have found a majority of the access points, there are still, I believe like five, that I'm not 100% sure on the location and having that system would allow him to triangulate where those were and putting a new system could possibly interfere with that. So that is one concern as far as taking the system down completely before putting it in again. But there probably, there's probably a lot he can do to begin installation without actually installing the access points while dismantling the current system. Just not anything with a signal that.
Looking for ways to get the system back up and running quicker if possible, but that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Do you have some additional information on the timeline for installing the new systems? Was there some estimated number of, of, of days for each segment that you have handy?
I do not have them in front of me. I should have, but in general, every access point took anywhere from 15 to 45 days to put in and many of them could be done concurrently. So factoring that in, phase one would likely take anywhere from 100, 100 to 120 days, if I have made a rough estimate.
I might add, considering the status and unusability of the system now, I don't think it'll be missed, to be frank.
There, there will be some locations, but I agree.
Taking it down and restarting it is also a way of making a show of it being replaced and encouraging people to come back and use it. I have found that there's a number of people in the city who don't know we have a system and having the opportunity to put it in the news more often may be beneficial.
Yeah. One other thing. So this, this RFP was strictly for the dismantling. Is that correct?
Dismantling of the existing system and the installation of a new system.
Oh, so why are we not looking to approve some more money for the next phase?
So I think some of the conversation we've had, and, and Ann is at the tail end of her tenure here as our Maricore Rare volunteer, is to pursue potentially allocating additional funds, but also at the same time to pursue different grant opportunities to build upon the existing system.
I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Questions? Questions? Darcy?
She's going to be missed. Is the IT department then involved in this for when you step out or who, who follows up after you?
Yes, the IT department has been involved thus far. They were on the reviewing for, group for the RFP and have been involved in this system and would work with the contractor in connecting it with the city's other infrastructure. It'd probably be Josh Chandler, the director of the Community Development Department that would kind of take over my role in keeping the contract going and moving forward. Being said, a lot of the, the work does appear to be kind of moving along, so.
Object oriented, technical. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
I have, I have a couple of questions. I realize that the equipment now is ruckus, is the access points. Are you going to go with that company again?
I have not heard a specific brand type from the poser. I don't believe so.
All right, then that leads to the next. The contractor, Actual Broadband, are they local or are they out of town?
They are local. They have worked with St. Mary's for a number of years nearby and have done a number of other local projects. They provided three references as well when they applied through our requirements of the RFP, which all gave absolutely glowing reviews.
Right. And then what happens with the access points that they take down? Do they surplus them? Do they destroy that, that equipment?
They are quite antiquated at this point, so they would dispose of them.
All right. Well, that's, and that brings up the last topic is your tenure and your leaving. Do we have the ability to deny that request to depart?
It is in process, as we said. It is in process.
We can always. All right. So I can't do that as a, this, the mayor tonight.
See what I can do.
All right. Thank you very much. Nice report.
Thank you. We need this.
I will.
We need to actually. We'll lead our motion on this action item. Contract Review Board B, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into contract number 2024-005, a contract with Actual Broadband for phase one of the Dallas Municipal Wi-Fi Assessment in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
And we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Counselor Runyon seconds the motion. Do we have any more discussion or debate? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries and passes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Nicely done. And your request to leave is denied. All right, let's move on now. We're on to action items. Number 10, 10A, authorization to apply for funding from the Ten A, Authorization to Apply for Funding from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Business Oregon Water Wastewater Financing Program to Update the City's Wastewater Facilities Master Plan. This is Mr. Anderson once again.
Thank you. Um, Council President and Counselors. The upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five budget includes six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to update the city's wastewater facilities master plan. Uh, only however, as it relates to the wastewater treatment plant, we're not looking at the collection system again. Um, this would be an update eleven years into our existing twenty-year plan, but there have been a lot of things that have changed in those eleven years, including the plant itself with upgrades that we did and completed in two thousand eighteen. Um, the uh uh construction of two new data centers. Uh, there's a number of historical operational issues that need to be addressed, and it's appropriate that to update the plan because we DEQ rules require that any new modifications be made to the plant are consistent with the plan. So the plan needs to be updated so we can make any further improvements that might be needed. Some of the issues to be addressed in that updated plan include correcting a foaming problem that's plagued the plant for decades, fixing the broken outfall pipe that discharges into the Columbia River, uh increasing the effluent pumping capacity, that is, the capacity of the plant to pump out of the plant and into the river. Um, to prevent flooding of the plant during storm events, as has occurred on several large uh storm events. Uh, installing systems to de-water biosolids because right now we're trucking uh product that's ninety-seven percent water up and down the road to uh land application. And planning for the treatment of low-strength wastewater from, excuse me, the two new data centers. Uh, and it may be a little bit counterintuitive, but receiving a lot of very loose, low-strength wastewater can be just as challenging to treat as receiving something that's really strong, really thick, really concentrated and and has its challenges. So DEQ has actually identified this as a particular concern. They want to see that we have an answer for, and this plan will provide those answers. Also, at the same time, we're in the process of renewing the discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. And we're going to be asking DEQ to increase the rated capacity from four point one five million gallons a day to six million gallons a day. And the updated plan will provide us the data and the analyses necessary to support that request so DEQ can make a decision. We staff plans to advertise a request for proposals uh this summer with the intent of awarding the contract before the end of twenty twenty-four. Then I'll retire and somebody else can get to work then.
Um, denied.
How? Like I told you, I don't remember asking. Um, um, it might be possible for the city to get some money to help pay for this plan update. Uh, and so staff's currently exploring two potential funding sources. Both of those require city council authorization for the city to apply for the funding. Uh, and both of these programs often work together, can be used in conjunction with each other on projects, so that's somewhat encouraging. The first program is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And under this program, we could get a loan uh planning loan that would be a five-year loan at point eight seven percent interest. And once that loan's received, up to a hundred thousand dollars of the loan could be forgiven. So the plan would be to uh complete the work associated with the update using uh loan funds. Get some of the loan forgiven, up to a hundred thousand dollars, and then immediately pay off the rest of the loan before any interest was accrued. This basically turns into a hundred thousand dollar grant towards the project. The second potential source of funding is the through the waste water wastewater financing program uh through Business Oregon. If it's determined that the city's project is eligible, there's still some question about that that we're working through. But this program might be able to provide a grant for up to twenty thousand dollars and a thirty-year loan at one percent interest, and fifty percent of that loan can be forgiven, which means they could contribute up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it. Again, the plan would be do the work, use the funds, uh, get the amount of the uh the maximum amount that we can forgive and then pay off the rest of the loan immediately. So tonight, staff is seeking city council's authorization to apply for both of these programs to help fund a needed update to the city's wastewater facilities master plan. As far as the budget implications, the adopted uh fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget includes the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and uh the wastewater treatment reserve fund to be spent to update the city's wastewater facility master plan. If either or both of these funding applications are successful, we would do a supplemental budget for council's consideration to uh accept these funds, and that uh supplemental budget would come to the council at a future date. With that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council move to authorize staff to apply for funding through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Water Wastewater Financing Program to update the city's twenty-year wastewater facility master plan.
All right. Excellent. Do I have any? Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, then let's uh, do I have a motion for this?
Council President, I move to authorize the authorize staff to apply for funding through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Water Wastewater Financing Program to update the city's twenty-year wastewater facilities master plan.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Counselor Long seconds. Counselor Run Randall uh made the motion. Do we have any other discussions of this topic? Hearing none, then all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, great. That that passes.
Thank you.
Uh, good. Let's move on to action item ten B, Hood Aero Flex Base Lease Renewal. Uh, Jeff Renaud will be presenting.
President and council members. As stated, we have a uh flex base lease renewal. Hood Arrow is the fixed base operator at the airport and has been leasing the flex space hangar, which is the adjacent side of the liflight building. For reference, since twenty eighteen for aircraft storage and maintenance, and that at least has reached its term for renewal. Attached five-year lease does reflect the required two point six percent CPI increase and increases the monthly rent to four thousand two hundred ten dollars and seventy cents. Budget implications, that is a hundred and six dollar and seventy cent increase in the monthly rent. Staff is moves. Staff recommendation is to move to authorize the city manager to execute the attached five-year Hood Arrow lease as presented contingent upon Click Attack County's approval.
Any counselors have any questions for uh Manager Renaud? Anyone? Okay, hearing none. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the attached Hood Arrow five-year lease as presented contingent on Click Attack County approval.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Um, Counselor Randall uh second, and Counselor Long made the motion. Do we have any other further discussion on this item?
Question?
Yes?
What does Hood Aero Flex do?
Hood Arrow is the FBO. They're the fixed base operator. They sell the fuel, do the maintenance. They are the the operator of the forward face forward-facing part of the airport.
Just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Very integrated into the operation of the airport. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No other uh questions, then we'll go ahead and uh uh all in favor of this or this motion, uh raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion carries. All right, we have now finished up. Oh, we've got C, which is action item C. And I need to where is that? Good. All right, action item C. This is a special ordinance number twenty-four dash six zero two. A special ordinance accepting title to real property located at thirty-three thirteen West Second Street. I see no one. Is this your report?
Yep.
Mr. Kara.
Thank you.
You are on the hot seat.
Thank you very much. Um, this went out as a supplemental uh agenda item for council's consideration this week. It is uh I drafted a special ordinance number two four dash six oh two to accept title to some real property. Um, as council may know, um, as a public body, one of the requirements for uh transferring real property to us in the state of Oregon is is our uh our acceptance uh formally of of the title to that parcel. And so just to give some context here, uh, this is a uh, I believe it's a point two nine acre property uh addressed thirty-three thirteen West Second Street, and um it's it's highlighted yellow on the diagram that I've included as part of my staff report. Um, and to provide some of the the legal context here, um, this all stems from the November eighth, twenty twenty-one infrastructure agreement that the city executed with uh design. The agreement concerned, if you might remember going back a couple of years, um, a number of design engineered and constructed utility infrastructure projects uh that is that that's just necessary to serve the uh the design's data center development. Uh, the total cost of all those infrastructure projects at the time that the agreement was entered was valued at around twenty-eight point five million dollars. Uh, this project is one of those um, one of those contemplated in the agreement, and it's specifically intended to uh construct a lift station at a local low point to a lift station uh to to lift sanitary sewer from the area west of River Road to the West Second Street sanitary sewer main. The project just finished a few weeks ago. The agreement contemplated as part of as as part of this process for the city to accept the final ownership and the operation of the project upon completion. And part of that acceptance involves acceptance of this real property. This is just the uh final part of a few other moving pieces in this uh project's finalization. Um, and the special ordinance attached to and made part of the staff report is uh it accomplishes just that. Uh, it evidences the city's acceptance of the property and authorizes the city manager to um accept the deed and title. Um, to ensure the city's unrestricted access to and the operation of the constructed project, which is located on this property, consistent with the provisions of the infrastructure agreement. You might notice I drafted this ordinance with an emergency clause. Um, typically ordinances require a thirty-day uh sort of uh period where um, no action could be taken on them. Uh, in this case, uh I'm recommending council adopt the ordinance with an emergency clause, making the city manager able to execute it uh immediately immediately upon adoption, more than likely uh tomorrow. Um, so that the city can file it with the county clerk's office and have its title insurance policy issued um, and just transfer this on over to the city. Uh, there aren't really any budget implications currently. Um, I consulted with the Public Works Director. He indicated that upon accepting ownership, the city's wastewater fund would receive some revenues from any wastewater that was discharged to that new lift station. Uh, and it would also incur some associated operation and maintenance costs for that project. Uh, my recommendation is for council to move to adopt this special ordinance number two four dash six oh two as presented and by title only. That's it.
Questions? I have one. Uh, so the construction on West Second Street at the triangle, that's part of this is um, it says West Second is the lift station, correct?
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Mr. Anderson.
I just want to know, and where do we stand on the finishing that? I know we've made some pretty good progress lately.
So the project on West Second Street, west of Weber.
Yes.
Northwest of Weber is not part of the project that he's talking about. It does include installation of new piping systems that this the that's a city-initiated and and paid-for project on Second Street. Those pipes will, though, however, receive wastewater from the lift station that Jonathan's referring to.
That's what I was curious about. And the the last part, when is the anticipated completion of that project on Second Street?
On Second Street, they're looking at the middle of July right now. They're finally out of the rock and able to make some progress, uh, a little bit fa- quite a bit faster progress.
Now, we've been sending out public notices to newspaper and radio on. It's just that people are asking and uh.
I don't think we've initiated or uh issued any updates. We certainly um issued a lot of press releases when the project was being undertaken for being implemented. Um, I don't recall seeing anything recently from the contractor as far as just status updates.
And who's the is it Crestline?
Uh, no, it is uh Ajax. Uh, another local construction company.
All right. All right, thank you.
And one other clarification.
All right, but but it's important because we're getting questions from citizens asking about that, and are they interrelated? And it appears not, but.
They are. They are related in the fact that they're part of the same sewer collection system. Uh, but the uh the project on Second Street is complete city-initiated, city paid for. The station project is being paid for by Design LLC and given to the city.
Part of the confusion may be from my investigation is that the parcel of land that we're accepting here tonight, if we accept it, is actually more on River Road, but the address comes from Second Street uh from a time long ago, but it's over on River Road where you can't get to right now because of construction.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. What's your pleasure?
Council President, I move to adopt special ordinance number two four dash six zero two as presented by title only.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Counselor Runyon, motion by Randall. Um, any other discussion or questions? Oop, yes, we have one.
By title.
Oh, is this by title only? By title only, do we need to have it read? What's your pleasure?
Oh, I need the ordinance read.
All right.
Special ordinance number two four dash six zero two, a special ordinance accepting title to real property located at three three one three West Second Street.
Excellent, we've had it read now. Um, any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion is carried. All right, we're into executive session. So this means that uh, do we have some? I I need a here's the script. Good. Excellent. I'm glad you're out to my right. Thank you. All right. Uh, the city council of the Dallas uh will now meet an executive session in accordance with ORS one ninety-two dot six six zero to consult with council regarding the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representative of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Uh, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect to return to open session in about ten minutes. The clock is counting. We are now returning to open session. No decisions were made in executive session. Do we have anything else to appear before city council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Counsel? On the dot.